Please stand for our invocation led by Patricia King, Associate Pastor, Pilgrim Rest, AME Zion Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good Father, God in heaven, we thank you once again for another day over. But this is a day that you have created and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And now, Father, we ask that you come into our midst as we begin another city council meeting. We ask that you be in the midst and that you would direct it in the way that you have it to go, Lord God. And we ask that everyone would be on one accord. And, Lord, we don't want to end this prayer without asking you to bless the ones that was victimized in the flood in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. So, Lord, we ask that your protection be among us today and that you would keep us in your keeping care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Gregory here. Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see a nice crowd here. We are still, obviously, in the multipurpose room and looking forward to moving back into the auditorium. We're told it will be in September, hopefully by mid-September, so look forward to seeing all of those renovations. Thanks to the county for providing all of these different spaces for us to meet to make it easier for us. We have a lot going on on our agenda today, some special guests who we will recognize shortly. I do want to let you all know, you may have already heard, if not, that there is a second travel-related Zika case here in Mobile County. As you know, the county health department recently announced that they detected West Nile virus in one of their tests, so please remember to take a few moments to empty any and all containers of standing water on your property. Remember, even just a capful, like on a water bottle, just a capful of water will breed these mosquitoes. So, take a look around, make sure you don't have any bodies of standing water on your property, use repellent if you're going outside. And, you know, it only takes just that little bit. With Labor Day around the corner, we will be enjoying the outdoors, hopefully if the weather, you know, cooperates. But a lot of people will be outdoors, so please, again, take time to use that repellent and get rid of all of the standing water on your property, and let's be safe. The Bankhead Tunnel will not be open to walkers and bikers this Saturday. Again, that's due to the holiday. We expect a whole lot more traffic going through the tunnel, so they will not have it open for the bikers and walkers this weekend. But, on a positive note, Kat from Ninety Two the Zoo is starting his weekly brown bag concert events. That's tomorrow in Beaville Square, and this will take place for the next several Wednesdays. So, be sure to go out and enjoy your brown bag lunch with Kat in Beaville Square. On today's agenda, the rollback of the police jurisdiction is one of the items that we will be looking at. It was laid over from last week and sent to the Public Safety Committee yesterday. The committee met, and we also had a very lively discussion at our pre-conference meeting this morning. The council decided this morning, of course, we haven't voted yet, but in the meeting this morning, we discussed laying over the rollback for at least one more week. And during this week's time, city attorneys will work with the county and their attorneys to hammer out an MOU memorandum of understanding with timelines dictating exactly when the city will roll back on its public safety services. That would be fire and police services in the outer bands of the police jurisdiction. The primary reason for the delay is not that there's no support for the measure. That is certainly not the case. We support the measure. Everyone just about on this council has said, without any doubt, that they support rolling back on the PJ. The reason is to give some time for the county commissioners and the residents in the county to better understand exactly what our timelines will be and how things will happen when the police and firefighters do roll back their services. We have a very large drainage project on the agenda today. It impacts a number of districts, and that's all part of our ongoing capital improvement program, and a big reallocation of funds to get moving on the city's Tiger Grant to redevelop Broad Street, and that's great news for that area. Rules of the council, very simple. We just ask everyone to please turn off your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, you'll have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's an indication that it's time for you to begin wrapping up your comments. Give us your name and address for the record. If you have any questions or concerns, please address them to me. I'm the chair, and I will try to resolve your issue by asking the appropriate council member or member of the administration at that point to answer those questions. Thank you all again for coming. We appreciate you being here. Ms. Lambert, go ahead.
Approval of minutes of August 23rd. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to ask Colonel Dave Ramey and Kathy Pope to please join me at the podium. I have a proclamation to read. Okey-dokey. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the state of Alabama and in the city of Mobile, and whereas Mobile is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in the community, and whereas the city of Mobile is dedicated to working with Feeding the Gulf Coast and educating people about the role and importance of food banks, and whereas more than eighty-one thousand five hundred and ninety individuals in Mobile County rely on food provided by Feeding the Gulf Coast annually, and whereas the foreign members of Feeding the Gulf Coast will host numerous events throughout September to bring awareness and attention to encourage efforts in hunger in Mobile, now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2016 as Hunger Action Month. Congratulations, Colonel. Congratulations. Anyone to speak for just a moment there?
Well, thank you. I brought Kathy here today because she is replacing me after this week as CEO. I've had sixteen great years of working with the community, the county, countless churches in the area to feed the people of Mobile County and our entire twenty-four counties. Kathy comes to us as the new CEO from handling Meals on Wheels in Macon, Georgia, a multi-county service to the area, so she understands food and the need of seniors in particular, but has over twenty-five years of experience taking care of people and doing great things to help people in the community. So, I pass the baton to her today. Thank you again for Hunger Action Month. It's a big deal for us because it raises awareness. Countless businesses in Mobile are going to help us through that process. So, go to the website, look at our Facebook page, look at the businesses in your community that are helping us help the other members of the community and support them during September. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be in your community and look forward to visiting with all of you and seeing how we can better serve the citizens that we serve in Feeding the Gulf Coast. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy, and welcome.
I know the city council realizes this, but the service that Dave Ramey has given to our community is worthy of a standing ovation by everybody in this room. We have a gold medal winner in DeMarcus Cousins, and I have asked if DeMarcus is the first gold medal winner from the city of Mobile. Does anybody know that? Any? Do you want a gold medal?
Ms. Irene was involved in that level. Yep.
So, it may be a very, we will be glad to stand corrected, but to have a Mobilean with a gold medal is a, you know, obviously, a big deal, and so we will be welcoming him home, not only as a gold medalist, but as a Sacramento Kings All-Star, at the airport this Thursday night at eight p.m. If I understand, the parking is free. He will also be hosting a free basketball camp for a hundred Mobile students and need -- a hundred Mobile students in need on Saturday at LaFlore High School. He will be onsite alongside VPS's forty-five-foot-long Mobile Eyes Vision Care Clinic. In addition to participating in the camp, the children receive free comprehensive eye exams onboard the Mobile clinic and glasses if prescribed. For those of you who have not witnessed this, it's really an amazing deal. The children come in and have their eyes checked, and if possible, they get the pair of glasses before they leave, and this is a big contribution to our community and things that DeMarcus does, not just in the city of Mobile. Later that afternoon on Saturday, there'll be a block party with music games, food, and more. The event is free and open to the public. You know, it's great to have somebody like DeMarcus where our young people can look up and hope one day that they would be a gold medalist. So, please join us if you can. Startup Weekend, this past weekend, entrepreneurs from across Mobile and some actually out of town, I met one from Chicago and one from Washington, D.C., were here to pitch business competition and educational experiences. It kicked off Friday night when participants from all walks of life were given just sixty seconds to pitch an idea for a business they were interested in starting from scratch. Sixty seconds. Reckon that I and you understand that we got sixty seconds to make our pitch going forward? Anyway, pretty interesting concept, and when you have to do that elevator speech, it really makes you think about what you're going to say. Only the top ideas move forward, but participants whose ideas weren't selected were still in for an intense weekend, and startups are thriving in combination with existing businesses. We have a winning formula for the city of Mobile. You know, we truly want to establish Mobile as a destination for entrepreneurs, and I want to thank Elise Gunnin and One Mobile for all that they did to organize this and make it happen. So, thank you, Elise, for that. My last comment has to do with the police jurisdiction. One of the city councils asked me if this is really a mutual aid agreement and, or an MOU, or a mutual aid agreement, and I've had clarification, I think it is an MOU, and so we will be, you know, working on that real soon. And, you know, to me, this is all about putting our citizens first and improving the citizens, improving the quality of services for our citizens so that they can have an improved quality of life. Thank you very much.
Mayor, you stole a little bit of my thunder, but not quite everything. All right. No more comments from the audience, Ms. Anne, when I hear you. All right. Colonel Dave Ramey was just up here at the podium, and he did mention that he was handing off the baton, but I have a proclamation specifically for Colonel Ramey, if you would join me. All right. Whereas Mr. David William Ramey, president and CEO of Feeding the Gulf Coast, formerly Bay Area Food Bank, is retiring in August 2016 after sixteen years of dedicated service, and whereas he has a BS degree in sociology from the University of New York, a master's degree in systems management from the University of Southern California, and he is a nineteen-eighty-seven graduate of the U.S. Air Force Air Command and Staff College, and whereas Colonel Ramey and his wife of forty-five years, Monica, are the proud parents of two grown grandchildren. Whereas he retired in February two thousand as a colonel, following a distinguished thirty-year career in the U.S. Army where he earned fifteen military service awards, and whereas in April of two thousand, Colonel Ramey became president and CEO of Feeding the Gulf Coast, where he's been tasked with the responsibility of distributing donated food throughout a twenty-four county service area spanning South Alabama, South Mississippi, and the Panhandle of Florida. And whereas during his tenure, the food bank has moved to a new facility, increased distribution from four million to over twenty million pounds annually, with a staff of fifty augmented by volunteers. He's coordinated disaster responses to hurricanes Ivan and Katrina and the Gulf Coast oil spill, and assisted Lieutenant Governor K. Ivey's office to establish the End Child Hunger in Alabama Task Force. Now, therefore I, Gina Gregory, council president, along with the mayor and members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, today, August thirtieth, 2016, as Colonel David Ramey Day of the City Council. Can I take a few words, if you will, and then if you would stick around for a photograph of you and the mayor in the photo before you leave?
Well, thank you very much. I think I covered the food bank already, and Connie mentioned the fifty staff, and that's really part of it, the fifty staff, but also more than a thousand volunteers at the churches we support, and they are the heroes. They're there, they're, some of them are seventy-five-year-old ladies helping load their car with food at the food bank to take back their church, to give the needy people. There are youngsters sorting food in the back room. It is a great, great group of volunteers, and that really says it's unique to me, after serving in multiple countries in my fifteen years overseas, it's uniquely American, and that's what has made my job easy. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for Way With a Noise ordinance on October twenty-second on Dexter Avenue, September seventeenth on Virginia Street, September fifth on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, and September tenth on Burtonwood Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of these appeals?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to resume, I'm sorry, to determine if property at ten fifty-three Choctaw Street, thirteen-ten Jesse Street, seventy-forty-five Smith Alley, and six-sixty-seven Cherokee Street are public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience today who would like to speak to any of these addresses, please come to the podium. Yes, sir?
Good morning. Property on ten fifty-three Choctaw.
Could you give us your name and address, please, for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Samuel Murphy. I live at ten fifty-four Choctaw Street, Mobile, Alabama.
Okay.
I bought that house about a couple of years ago. I revitalized it, and the property across the street, I saw that burned, and I put an application for the buyer from the state. I'm waiting to hear from them, the price of it, so I can purchase it and rehabilitate the house, I mean, redo it, remodel it. So, that's what I'm waiting on.
So, you are waiting on?
Estate. It's a tax sale.
Okay. You're, you want to purchase ten fifty-three?
Correct.
Okay. David Doggamba, are you in the audience?
I understand that. The property across the street, ten fifty-four, I bought it, it was worse than ten fifty-three.
Madam.
Go ahead.
My question would be, what is it that we're doing? And I think, I say it rhetorically, we are ordering it repaired or demolished, and it will be up to the administration to determine the timeline for that repair or demolish. We are simply declaring it a nuisance and giving it two options. One is you tear it down or repair it, or we'll tear it down, and I think that nothing changed by us delaying this or acting, and I recommend that we act.
Yeah, and that's ten fifty-three that?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
I do agree with Councilman Williams that this is just declared. I asked you, Dave, if you can work with David and after today, I mean, after this meeting, and try to just get this together, but it's just declaring, and that's all it is.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I came to the meeting and let you know that I'm interested in the property. I've been putting my application over, I think, over a month ago. I've been in talks with a couple people, I got a letter from the city clerk, so that's why I'm here. But you guys know that I am interested in buying the property and revitalizing it and not just tearing it down.
Great. Well, this is a gentleman right here to speak to and work with.
And definitely work with the gentleman if he can get title and get the point where he can get a building permanent to the parent.
Yes.
We can do that, and that's what our goal is, to do that. However, it's still a nuisance.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of these properties, please come to the podium. Okay, with that, then, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Danny Cordy.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the city council, Mayor Stimson and your staff, and ladies and gentlemen here and watching. For the record, Danny Cordy, Director of the Mobile Sports Authority, and we're at three-oh-one Government Street. We have a lot of exciting things going on with the Mobile Sports Authority and the sports in Mobile. So far this fiscal year, which coincides with your fiscal year ending September thirtieth, we have attracted, hosted, co-managed thirty-three sporting events, which have brought almost a nineteen-million-dollar economic impact to our area, so we're real proud of that. And that would not be possible without the investment that the Mobile County Commission and the Mobile City Council, the mayor's office, has made in doing that. Another reason I'm here, I want to talk about a few events coming up. This weekend, if you're out at Municipal Park, you'll see about a thousand youngsters running in the Mobile Challenge of Champions Cross Country Race. It's the twenty-fifth year for that. We have, I believe, forty-five schools from around the area and out-of-towners coming in, so that'll go, that'll go off on Saturday morning. But the big event coming up in two and a half weeks is the Fifth Quarter Classic. Florida A&amp;M will be in Mobile to entertain Tuskegee University. This is an event that's probably the largest event we've ever had anything to do with, going back fifteen years or maybe even longer. This is an event that, again, we've been working on for several years. When I got back in 2011 in this position, one of my goals was to try to bring back a classic-style football game to Mobile, and it is here. A lot of excitement, a lot of buzz going on around the community. We've had numerous meetings, conference calls, and we hope that the community will support this event. Florida A&amp;M and Tuskegee used to be rivals. They have not played in twenty years, so from the Tuskegee side, we hear there's a lot of excitement about it. The kickoff at Lad People's Stadium is six o'clock on September seventeenth, which, again, is two and a half weeks away. Tickets are on sale at Food for Less, at Northside Check Exchange, Ticketmaster.com, and you can even call Florida A&amp;M Athletic Department, too. So, we're real excited about this. I mean, football season is here, and this time of year, everybody's undefeated, so everybody thinks they're going to be the champion, and, and again, meeting with the FAMU folks and the Tuskegee folks, there's a lot of momentum starting to build. And let's face it, Mobile is a last-minute town, so we hope to really ratchet this thing up in the next few weeks. We've been on social media, we've been on TV, we're going on TV, we've been on radio. So, again, it wouldn't be possible without the investment that both the city and the county have made, and I thank you very much. After that, in about a month, the MSA 5K, last year we were asked to take over the old Bay Fest 5K, which is, which is in conjunction, was in conjunction with Bay Fest, it's now in conjunction with ten sixty-five, and that'll go off on October first. So, a lot of exciting things going on as the fall comes, and again, I very much appreciate your support, again, both city, county, mayor, and hopefully, this classic, back to the classic game will be something that we do every year. We're going to see how this one goes, and then we go forward from here. But, again, my door's open. Any questions or any comments that you might have, please don't hesitate to call, and again, we're real excited about what's going on in the future in the next year, too. So, thank you very much.
Madam President.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate it. Mr. Small?
Hey, thank you so much for coming down on this morning. I have friends coming from Florida and Virginia and Georgia and Tennessee to this game. How is the hotel rooms are looking? Did you know?
The local hotels, the ones I've talked to are filling up fast. For instance, the Holiday Inn Hotel, which is the team hotel for FAMU, has, I think, four or five rooms left. So, we hear that the whole area out on the Belt Line, downtown, is filling up, and let's face it, like I said, everybody seems to wait to the last minute, which kind of makes planning these events kind of tough, but, but again, we're starting to see these hotels filling up. Yes, sir?
All right, sounds great.
All right.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ordinance is held over. Zero-one-zero-three-six amend Article One, Section one dash two of the city code to reduce the police jurisdiction from three miles to one and one-half miles effective January first, 2017.
Resilience for one week.
Second.
All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right.
Sixty-four-zero-four-one, rezoom property at twelve-sixty and twelve-sixty-two Dolphin Street and Four North Ann Street from R-one and B-one to B-one.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixty-four-zero-four-two, rezoom property at the north side of Todd Acres Drive from R.A. and B-five to I-one.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Eighty-eight-zero-four-three, ordinance deeming vacant property not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale to Saint Anthony and Dearborn Partners, six-ten Saint Anthony Street.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over. Twenty-one-five-two-eight, authorize contract with John G. Walton Construction Company for 2016 group C drainage improvements and repairs.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-one-five-two-nine, authorize foreign trade zone operated agreement with L.A. Power doing business as Go-Go Logistics.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-one-five-three-zero, authorize agreement with Aldat relating to I-ten Eastbound Water Street on-ramp closure and improvements to Canal Street.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-nine-five-three-one, reallocate money from Capital Project Cities, share economic development incentives in the Capital Improvements Fund to Grant Fund, Tiger Grant.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
I just want to remark that I'm appreciative of all the work of the administration and everyone associated with the procurement of this grant. I know that we, as a city, went after it three different opportunities, and finally was able to secure it, and I don't quite think the citizens in the impacted areas quite realize how transformative this grant will be, not only on Broad Street, but going down Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue and other areas of District Two and in our city, that will really be impacted by the length and breadth of what will happen as a result of this grant. So, again, I'm happy to be associated and certainly appreciate everything that the administration, everyone who worked to secure this grant, so that we will see the transformative nature that it will take along the Broad Street corridor and also along the MLK area.
All right. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Mr. Williams?
I know this is not about the Tiger Grant, it's about a match, but I can't help but at least echo a little bit of what my colleague spoke of, and this is a monumental contribution to our city. Maybe unprecedented, what we're going to see as a result of the efforts of the last couple of years of many discussions between this administration and the Obama administration, and visits to the White House, and countless phone calls and legal discussions. and visits to the White House, and, and countless phone calls and legal discussions. This is really gonna be an amazing thing, and I look forward to, to seeing it happen during our time on the council, thank you.
And of course, it's very competitive, these Tiger Grants are very competitive. Pretty much every city in the state goes after these grants, so we are very fortunate to have been awarded this. I know this is our, our third time.
It's every city in the country.
Well, well, I, well, true, I'm, I'm just saying as far as in Alabama, being able to get the grant in Alabama is, is very, very special for us, and a lot of time and effort goes into writing the grants and making sure that you have it done the correct way, and that we are extremely fortunate, Mr. Manzi.
I just wanted to, since John referenced him, I want to thank President Obama as well. I cannot have John Williams out Obamamy at this table.
That's what I'm talking about.
All right, anybody else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, eighty-eight zero four five.
By Council Ruins, ordinance eighty-eight zero four five, relive for one week.
Consent resolution's being introduced for the first time, zero three five three three through fifty-eight five three nine.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, zero three five three three through five eight five three nine.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero, excuse me, zero three five three three, appoint Vanessa Davis Wright and Doug Dabney to the Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-seven five four seven, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special retail more than thirty days license for fifty-yard line backyard Cafe Lad People's Stadium.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-five three four, five three five, five three six, five three seven, declaring the structures at ten fifty-three Choctaw Street, thirteen ten Jesse Street, seventy forty-five Smith Alley, and six sixty-seven Cherokee Street, public notices and ordering them repaired or demolished.
So moved.
Seven.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-six five three eight, change name of Bay Bridge Road to Africatown Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
Uh, we have some citizens from the great state of Plateau, Africatown, if you all would stand. And, and I know some, no one signed in, but. A very proud people, a very hard-working, salt-of-the-earth, almost as in many respects men of forgotten appendage in our city, and we have worked hard to try to make certain that their concerns are met, along with every other community. I know no one signed in, Madam President, but I'm sure there's at least one individual, either Reverend Tucker or Mr. Portis, if you all could, if we could allow them just a few words in support of this initiative.
Sure.
And I'm appreciative of all of you taking time to come down today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lister C. Portis. I reside at six oh four Camel Street and Plateau Magazine Point Happy Hill, Africatown, USA.
All right now.
And we are very much in support. Plateau has been a historical community within this nation, not only in the city, not only in the state, but in this nation. We have several of the oldest Baptist churches there, one of the oldest historical high schools, training school, within the state of Alabama. And the citizens of that area, we meet every Wednesday because we have a plan for Plateau. And this is part of the plan, to bring recognition to our beloved area, and this will help us get to where we need to be. We're not asking for handout, we're asking for a helping hand to help us enhance this part of the county, this part of the city, this part of the state. Plateau is such a great area, it should not be kept quiet, it deserves to be known nationally. And by changing the name to Africatown Boulevard would bring us the type of neutrality that we need. We have tourists and other persons all the time driving through that area, looking for Africatown, not being aware that they're already in Africatown when they reach Bay Bridge Road. But when we change the name to Africatown Boulevard, not only they will know, the GPS in their vehicles will tell them, you're in Africatown.
All right now.
So this is going to help us, and we know that the fight doesn't end here today because in understanding civics, we understand that there are some things that are city-related, county-related, state-related, and federal-related. But when we do get to that table, we would like to have your support one hundred percent in this effort. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right.
And I'd like to recognize Pastor Tucker of the Union Baptist Church, Pastor Derek Tucker, and also, I see him standing, Mr. Cleon Jones, who is of the Miracle Mets, sixty-nine Miracle Mets, native of Plateau, and he works hard along with several of the others who are here. Thank God for each and every one of them.
Yeah, thank you for coming, appreciate it, and congratulations. All right, Mr. Richardson.
Yes Madam President, I would like to commend Councilman Manzi and the citizens of Africatown for this, where we are today, in naming this street, Africatown Boulevard. This is a historical community, and you are putting your mark on the street. So that would be a no-doubt moment. If they didn't know, now they know. I think you are defining, not only who you are, you are defining where you are. And no one can get lost anymore trying to get to Africatown. We have people coming in our city almost every day, and they have heard of Africatown. And we have to try to twist and turn, see, you go down, it, it, when you can come in on I one sixty-five, get off on Africatown Boulevard and go to Africatown. I mean, you're making it, or if you're on I ten, get off on Africatown Boulevard because Africatown Boulevard gonna go over the bridge and go to the causeway. And you can ride on around that way, too. So, I, I think it's monumental, but I just, I also would like to say that Councilman Manzi is also working with the State Department. The Africatown Bridge, I want y'all to take a look at that bridge. It's gonna cost some money to do it, and he doesn't have the money, but he's gonna work on that. That bridge is held up by mashed wire, and the wire is in the form of the Egyptian pyramids. It goes up and it comes down. Not only are you gonna be on Africatown Boulevard, but you've got the pyramids up there on that bridge, and it's dark at night. People downtown ought to be able to see Africatown from the bridge. Now, I'm, I'm working, I forgive some of my money, he doesn't have enough money to do it. But he, but I would say this much.
Make him write it.
He's gonna light that, there's no reason for that bridge to be dark. Not no bridge like that, there's no reason for that bridge to be dark. The bridge, they're gonna light that bridge up, they're gonna have to see you in the night, even in the night, they're gonna have to see you, and I'm behind him one hundred percent.
All right, thanks.
All right.
All right, Mr. Manzi, I would make sure that Mr. Richardson signs that.
Ms. Fairley, if you could get that.
Put it on paper, and he signs that?
You could get that and write it.
I may.
All right, thank you again.
Yes sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I live at seven five one Ever Street in Africatown. I used to be Cleon Jones, the baseball player. That's what I'm told when I go to New York, didn't you used to be Cleon Jones? Well, I'm still there. But I, I want to personally thank this body for our neighborhood plan. This plan is great. The Africatown, uh, street project is just an enhancement that would help develop this plan. And again, I want to thank each and every one of you for this plan, the mayor's office, the planning commission, to put us in position to work on this plan and make Africatown the project that it should be, as related to tourism. And when I think of places like Charleston, that probably the size of Mobile, but are doing five times as much tourism as we are doing, Africatown would certainly enhance that. So all we have to do now is go to work as a community and bring this plan to, to life. And I think we'll be in business. So thank you again for having us, and let's move forward, thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Resolution fifty-eight.
I don't think we voted.
I don't think we voted on that one.
Oh, okay.
We moved and seconded.
Sometimes when we have so much discussion, it's hard to remember. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fifty-eight five three nine, authorize removal of weeds through fifteen forty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolution's being introduced for the first time, twenty-one five four zero through twenty-one five four two.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, twenty-one five forty through twenty-one five four two.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one five forty, authorize contract with Sawgrass Consulting for downtown sidewalk repair and maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one five four one, authorize contract with Sycamore Construction for Copeland Cox Tennis Center Drainage Repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one five four two, authorize contract amendment with Driven Engineering for Graham Road Drainage Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one five four three through twenty-one five four six.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, twenty-one four, five four three, four four and four five, and twenty-one five four six, relive for one week by Council Ruins.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one five four three, authorize contract with Nations Roof Gulf Coast for exploring roof repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one five four four, authorize contract of J.A. Dawson and Company for Connie Hudson Mobile Regional Center, Senior Center, Senior Community Center.
So moved.
So, second.
Discussion?
Yes, if I could just comment on this, thank you. This is a, a very nice project and an amenity to the senior center. It's at the entryway, and actually, the community, the foundation that is a nonprofit group is going to be reimbursing the District Six funds, because this is a project that they selected. But in working with Kimberly Harden, which I really want to thank her for her support and energy in working with the community group and making this come this far at this point, we are looking forward to having those benches placed at the entryway, which, like I said, will be a nice addition and will actually come from the community group that supports the center. But just want to make sure that that's understood by everyone, thank you.
Anyone else, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one five four five, authorize contract with Otis Elevator Company for power supply board replacement civic center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Mrs. Rich.
Oh, thank you very much. I will dovetail into making an announcement about the foundation for the Connie Hudson Senior Center, which is totally a nonprofit group. They have no paid staff, everything that they raise goes directly to the center. And on September twenty-ninth, they are having a fundraiser, which will be a buffet, dinner, and a silent auction. It will actually be at the center, which we're very glad to see it actually take place there. I have tickets that I'll be happy to make available to my colleagues, and they are thirty dollars a person and fifty dollars a couple. And again, this is, everything that they raise goes back into that community center, senior center, which is a very loved facility. And again, September twenty-ninth is the event from six to eight P.M. at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, thank you.
All right, Mr. Richardson.
Wow, it's moving fast.
Well, we're gonna slow down now.
Okay. Wait a minute.
She's got the gavel though.
I wanna, I wanna start my comments off on ordinance zero one oh three six. It has to do with moving the police jurisdiction back by a mile and a half, and I want to make it simple where all, everybody can understand what, what we are doing. It is the mayor that placed this ordinance on our agenda, to roll back the police jurisdiction by a mile and a half. The commissions came before us and said they want us to postpone this for one year because they needed time to buy equipment, you know, for police and the fire. Okay? Mayor Stimson stepped up to the plate and said, no, I will continue to police the jurisdiction until twenty eighth, January twenty eighteen. Okay, all of that sounded real good, but what we discovered that the sheriff gonna police some, the city gonna police some. The, the volunteer firefighters going to put out some fires, and then the city gonna put out other fires. We don't know as a council who is gonna do what, who's gonna be putting out what fire, who's gonna be policing certain street, and we ask for a memorandum of understanding so we could explain what we are doing. We postponed this for one week for them to draft us a memorandum of understanding, hopefully by next week, we will pass, we will pass. There's nobody fighting it, to my knowledge. We want to be able to defend it. We, when they put that microphone in my face, I don't want to say, I, I don't, I don't know who gonna police that section over there. I want to be able to say with certainty exactly what is gonna happen. So there's someone wants to vote today, we're not voting today because we want to know what we are voting on, we want to understand. I'm through with that, I was trying to make that real simple. Okay, I want to say that this Saturday, the Crichton Cag Group is gonna have what they call the Crichton Explosion. It's a pre-Labor Day event, it's all free, it's gonna be at the Mill Street Park starting at twelve o'clock. They're gonna have food, music, game, spacewalk, refreshments, barbecue cook-off, venue's gonna be there. It's all free, we're asking all the citizens, every, in every community in the Crichton area to please come out and join us, they're gonna have some quartets out there, they're gonna have a sing-off, cook-off, all sorts of entertainment. This is the second one, this is the second one, I got it covered, Miss Antone, I got it covered. This is the second one, last year was the first one, and it was, it was well-supported. We intend for this one to be larger. We're gonna be spending about ninety thousand dollars in the Mill Street Park. But one of the reasons we are doing this, the community to ask for it. But we don't have electricity, we don't have water, we don't have anything up there, so when we get ready to put the speakers in, the county has to come out and hook their equipment up for us to do that. We're not doing that anymore next year. I want provisions, I want, I want seats, I want a covered, a covered area for the people to get out of the sun. I want this park to look like the other parks, and we're gonna spend what we need to spend to make it so. So that one be ready this year, and I want the sign, I have a sign that said Mill Street Park, and it's way down the street. I want it on the corner, I want a no-doubt moment, when you get to Mill Street Park, you got to know you are there. And I got, my park's representative is in the house, listening to me. And I got, my park's representative is in the house, listening to me, right over here. This is the Mill Street Park. It's a lot going to be going on over there. We want to have all, everything ready for this year. But next year, we want, we want that, that park to be transformative, we want a no doubt moment when people get there. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Mr. Daves.
Thank you, Madam President. Two things I'd like to mention. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone that at this meeting next week, we will have a public hearing on the mayor's proposed fiscal year 2017 budget. And that afternoon at two o'clock p.m., the City Council Finance Committee will meet on the ninth floor in the City Council Conference Room to begin deliberations on the mayor's proposed budget. I'd also like to mention that on September thirteenth, at six o'clock p.m., we will have a District Five Community Meeting. It will be at Saint Pius Roman Catholic Church on Sage Avenue. We have invited guests, include the mayor, Admiral Landolt, who's Public Safety Director, and Bill Harkins, who's Director of Public Services. Again, that's September thirteenth, two weeks from today, Saint Pius Catholic Church, Sage Avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Small.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very excited to tell the citizens of District Three, I would be going out this coming Thursday, September first, at thirteen-twelve Bay Avenue to award the yard of the month. The recipient is Mrs. Florine Edwards, and the staff, excuse me, my crew. And I will be going out this coming Thursday at ten o'clock a.m. to go and award her the yard of the month. Encouraging all the citizens of District Three to please keep your yards up. If you have any property that's around you with overgrown grass, please call three-on-one, and remember to get you a SRO number. And remember that District Three is a place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll make this as quick as I can make it. It'll be real quick. Mobile Bay Bears' last home game is tomorrow. Very successful double-A program. It is essential that we maintain this relationship in our city. And I say so because Fred talks about parks, we all talk about parks, we all talk about the youth of our city. In through those gates walk thousands of kids every year to experience the great American pastime. Nowhere close can they do that and see future professionals that get their start here in Mobile. I encourage everyone, if you're waiting for a time to go see the Mobile Bay Bears this year, that you go tonight or tomorrow. And if you, if you're looking for an easy way to entertain a family, you can buy a three-dollar hot dog and a five-dollar ticket and go out and spread a blanket on Bay Bear Mountain and watch a great American pastime game here in Mobile. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Manzi.
Yes, Madam President, I want to thank the residents again from Africatown Plateau who have come in support of this historic agenda item that was passed unanimously by this council. I want to thank my colleagues for your support. This weekend, I believe, will be a litany of activities in the Africatown community, starting Saturday at nine o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, at the Robert Hope Center, the Reverend Robert Hope Center. And then also continuing Sunday after church. So Councilman Richardson, when you leave Mill Street, you can come over to Africatown both days. The public is certainly invited to come and participate. This is also the second year for these particular activities, and I'm just happy to see the community build such synergy and, and become so active. The Mobile Bay National Estuary Program, the MLK Redevelopment Corporation, and the Student Conservation Association received a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant to establish the Alabama Coastal Conservation and Resiliency Corps to connect young adults from District Two, Lower Three Mile Creek, to their surrounding environment through education, conservation, training, and employment. This grant is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant that will employ ten young adults from this underserved urban community that will be recruited by the MLK Redevelopment Corporation in a six-month program that will not only pay them, training them on the invasive species management and drainage issues relative to Three Mile Creek. So this is a big deal for District Two. I'm appreciative of Tom Hurdle, Michael Pierce, and everyone else that's connected with this effort to employ these ten young people from our district and give them this head start in a possible new career, a whole new outlook on life for these ten young individuals from our community. And I also want to speak briefly on the agenda item we passed relative to downtown Mobile and sidewalks. We know that there are a lot of issues with sidewalks across, not only our downtown area, but across every community, pretty much in the city of Mobile, principally in an area like District Two, which is some of the oldest areas in our community. Over the last two years, we've expended a million dollars on sidewalks, one million dollars on sidewalks in every community in District Two. And this plan that we passed, they will focus on downtown, but we'll be coming shortly after October to continue to place sidewalks in communities that for years have not had them, community like Africatown, Peter Lee Street, and Edward Street, and things of that nature. We're working hard as a city to address all of these issues. I would ask for your patience. I know people here, three million dollars, and they feel that their issue on their street in front of their house could be remedied overnight. It doesn't quite work that way, because we have a backlog of well over two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars worth of needs. But we're getting there, we're certainly making progress, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Thank you.
All right, I have a community meeting this evening with residents in Alpine Hills and Park Forest. Nick Amberger with the Cities Engineering Department, as well as a representative from Aldott, will be on hand for this meeting. The focus will be on the widening of Ziegler Boulevard. Yes, it's still there, one day it is coming, we are making progress. And so tonight's meeting will be an update for all of the residents who live along Ziegler Boulevard. It will be at Saint John's United Methodist Church at seven o'clock p.m. A couple of other announcements that are of citywide interest. Next Tuesday, after our pre-conference meeting, we will stay put to have a presentation about Move Mobile. It's a new program that the mayor is initiating, and we've asked the director of that program if she would come and give us a presentation on exactly what it is. Also coming up on September twenty-seventh, we will continue our off-site meetings, will be at the Via Senior Center, so that will be a nighttime meeting on September twenty-seventh at six o'clock p.m., Ms. Lambert? Six o'clock, okay. Following the District Two, Via Senior Center off-site meeting, District Four comes up next. And then in December, we will hold our annual off-site meeting at the Old City Hall. Be a heads up, we do have some off-site meetings coming up. With that, I think I saw Mr. Dave's hand come up.
I'm good.
You're good? All right. Any other announcements? All right, we are adjourned.